Well, when they stuck to us and then that turns into a big. You know, it really does.
Good morning, everyone. This is the January 10th, 2024, meeting of the Monterey County Planning Commission. I'm going to call it to order at nine o'clock this morning, or 9:01, and ask our clerk to, well, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Getzelman, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not mine. Thank you. I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Here.
Commissioner Wark?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Gomez? Absent Commissioner Mendoza? Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Monsalve? Absent Commissioner Daniels?
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum with two absences.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask the secretary to run down the ability for people who are not present to participate in this meeting. Tell us how you can do this on Zoom, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So if you've joined by Zoom, we ask that only staff and committee members have their videos showing. This can help with bandwidth and helps reduce distractions. Staff will help monitor and turn videos off as needed. Also, we ask that you keep yourself muted unless you're presenting or invited to unmute yourself. When the time comes to mute yourself on the Zoom platform, there's a mute button at the bottom of the screen, and it looks like a microphone. To mute yourself on the mobile phone or landline, you press star six, and then you push that same button, or press star six to unmute. When the time comes for public comment, either general public comment or for specific items, that'll be announced, and at that time, to participate in the public comment on the Zoom platform, you can raise your hand by opening the reactions at the bottom of your screen and clicking on the raise hand icon. If you are here in person and wish to speak, you may also do so by filing out a speaker form and coming up to the podium during public comment. Please do not speak outside of the public comment period unless otherwise summoned by the chair, and if summoned by the chair, please walk up to the podium. On a mobile or landline, you can raise and lower your hand by pressing star nine. Thank you. Oh, during the course of the hearing, we also continue to accept public comment that may be submitted via email, and that email address is PChearingcomments@co.montreal.ca.us. So again, that's PChearingcomments. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. It's really a fine essay there. This is the time set aside on our agenda for anyone from the public to comment on an item that is not on the agenda today but which is a matter that the Planning Commission is concerned in. Is there anybody in the room who would like to come forward and do that? Is there anyone remotely who would like to comment on an item not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move along to Agenda additions, deletions, and corrections. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Good morning. Distributed is correspondence received for Agenda item number five, PLN 230035, Ben Guard Family Partnership, and Agenda item number six, PLN 200032, Flores, Paul H., and Linda S. Trust. Oh, and sorry. For the record, Commissioner Gomez has joined us today.
Thank you. I'd also just like to ask, given that we have had a couple of agenda changes, would you just like to summarize what we've done in terms of the published agenda, so people are aware?
Yes, we had two addendas. So revised Agenda item number five for Ben Guard Family Partnership, PLN 230035, to include the complete set of plans on Exhibit A draft resolution. And Agenda item number four, County of Monterey Porter Vallejo Mansion, PLN 230203, was removed from the agenda on January 5th, 2024, at 4:09 PM, and a final revised agenda was distributed.
Thank you. Much appreciated. So now is the time for Commissioner comments and requests. Do we have any of those this morning? Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you. I have been asked by several members of the public over the last couple of weeks about a large development proposed below Montero. I've heard at some point maybe 1,000 homes, and so I don't know anything about this, and I don't know if it's something that is able, is we can get information on as the Planning Commission to hear about. I don't, I don't know what stage it's in, but apparently there's been meetings, and I'm interested in learning more about that. And similarly, I think Caltrans has proposed some traffic circles on Highway 68 that there's having public meetings about, and I'm wondering if the Planning Commission can also receive that information.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think the secretary wants to say a few words, but I would support putting that, a report or an update on a future agenda. Ms. Bredy?
Yeah, I think in response to the development that's being discussed below Montero, I think over by the Monterey Airport, I believe, because we've gotten a number of public inquiries as well, I think that there's some confusion in terms of we have our housing element draft that's underway, and that site across the, kind of in the vicinity of the airport, is an affordable housing overlay site that we have identified as, as an opportunity site in our sites inventory. From what I understand, there may be some other activities happening separate from that, but to our knowledge, there's no approved significant development, and I think it's concerns over the housing element draft and sites inventory.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Roberts, is that? Good. Commissioner Gonzalez, did you have a referral? I thought I saw a hand over there. Anybody over here? Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you. Yeah, to follow up on what Ms. Bredy stated, I'm curious.
Is your microphone on?
I am, but I never get it right. How's that? Does that help?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm told I get too close to the microphone, so I'm trying to not be too close. My question is regarding the housing element, because I too have heard a lot about that, that site location, and concerns about it as well, since there appears to be a developer that has also purchased the area that we've identified in the site's analysis, and, and that a potential rezone would facilitate that development, and a lot of units. And so I'm just curious, when will we get the opportunity at the Planning Commission to take a look at the housing element again? When does it come back to this body?
Yeah, so the housing element.
Yeah, the housing element, right now, we are on track to have a draft in the spring, hopefully earlier spring, and our intention is to have a workshop at the Planning Commission and a couple of other committees during that public comment period. There's a 30-day public comment period.
Through the chair, I have a question, then. Is it, is there still an ample opportunity to discuss the sites, and a site like that in particular, that's been identified for so many units? Is that, is that still going to be an opportunity for us to sort of weigh in, or do you suggest that's done at an earlier time?
So we've spent a good deal time with the sites inventory. The sites inventory really drives the rest of the document because of everything that has to reflect those sites, so it's very difficult and time-consuming to continue to update and change the sites inventory. That doesn't mean, if there's strong sentiment or direction from, from our policymakers to do so. I think it's important that we try to convey that the sites inventory identifies opportunity sites, and we do need to include policies and programs to help make it feasible for development to happen, but it in no way guarantees development. Any project that's proposed still has to go through the regular public process for approvals, public input, and consideration, and so I think it's important to balance both of those, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no more. Commissioner Gomez?
It relates to the housing element. In terms of, I know that there's some compliance issues I've had to deal with at the state, right, and I know that staff has been working with some concerned citizens for quite some time. It's part of the reason why we haven't seen it from the, from the coast, and among them, I think those are probably one of the issues they've discussed, the property you've mentioned. But in terms of complying with state law and ensuring that we're not, as a county, not punished because we, we don't have our housing element on time, are we going to be able to comply with those requirements?
So no, our official deadline to submit and have a certified housing element was in December, so we're past that window. There is a three-month grace period for certain penalties, that there is a grace period, however, we're well behind schedule, so we continue to make progress as quickly as possible. Really, one of the important, we as staff have really been trying to balance the importance of making sure that this is a meaningful and community-vetted document. There are substantially more requirements this year, and a significant number of other jurisdictions that likewise are struggling with the timelines. So we are past the official deadline. We are within that window of grace period, but we'll continue to move it forward responsibly, expeditiously, but also making sure that we address appropriate local concerns.
And I just wondered, there is also a risk that, that a private developer, any private developer, come back based on the new state regulations, that they could actually over, go around us, right, and approve some of these projects if the zoning is correct for them. So that's the other risk that we have when we don't have a housing element, so.
Yeah, I think what you're referring to is referred to as the builder's remedy. So there are some, there are some considerations in state law that do allow, once a jurisdiction is out of compliance with a housing element, either, in various ways you can be out of compliance, that does make it more challenging. There are certain criteria that that development has to meet in terms of affordability and otherwise, and then it limits the, the amount of time and the just, and the reasons why jurisdictions potentially could not approve that development. If, I don't think I'm prepared to speak beyond that today, but if this is something that there's more information desired, I know there's been other consideration, and maybe I can look to county council as well. Kelly, you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I can't tell you all the elements of builder's remedy now, but we've also discussed this with the board of supervisors. So if the commissioners wish we could return with an item detailing all of that, but really, staff's number one goal is move this forward, and I think that's happening now, that the sites inventory has been finalized a few months ago, so.
Thank you, both, or all of you. I would just add that I'm hesitant to support extensive staff work on something over which we have no control whatsoever. It's informative, and should the situation arise, I would assume we will be fully informed, but I'm mindful of my desire to know everything with the importance of me knowing it, if for want of a better way to put it. So for our staff, if it were something you could provide perhaps in written form as a report to kind of keep us up to date, I would appreciate that, but I would, would certainly understand that it is important to manage our, our staff time as well. Any further Commissioner comments or requests? Seeing none, I'm going to move along to item one on our agenda, which is the PC referral spreadsheet. Madam Secretary, you want to say anything about that?
I just wanted to say there have been no changes other than updating the one referral that we closed out last time. We haven't, I don't have a date, but we will in the next month or two be returning with an update on fire rebuilds. I have reached out to my colleague who will be doing that, and we'll get that on the agenda in the next couple of months, and otherwise, just if the commission has any questions or comments.
Thank you. All right. I think we're ready to move along to our scheduled items, the first of which is item number two, PLN 220117, the Dolores Pass LLC. Madam Kanga, Madam Kanga, would you like to speak to us on that subject?
Yes, thank you, Chair Deal, members of the Planning Commission, Anna Kanga with HCD Planning. I'm here to present on the Dolores Pass application, file number PLN 220117. On October 25th, 2023, the Planning Commission heard this item, and continued the item to this date to allow staff and the applicant additional time to further analyze development on slopes in excess of 30%. The applicant has requested a continuance of this hearing to a date uncertain in order to allow further exploration of...
Instead of saying no, we're going to say?
Further explanation of design alternatives.
Thank you. So the recommendation is to grant the applicant's request for continuance to a date uncertain?
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission on that recommendation? Seeing none, are there any comments from, if the applicant's representative is here, I'd be glad to hear from them, or online? Do we have any indication that they are? No. Is there anybody here present who would like to speak on the matter of the continuance?
Through the chair?
Yes.
We have Angie Ferris. I believe that's the agent.
Very well, let's go ahead and allow that comment.
Hi, yes, this is Angie Ferris. I'm with Hastings Construction. Yes, we are just wanting to explore some more options for the floor plans and elevations to better fit the site, so we would very much appreciate a continuance on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to the public. Is there any further public comment on the matter of the continuance? Seeing none in the room, further online, no emails? I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner, it's your pleasure. Motion would be in order if you've got no comments?
I'll move continuance.
Moved by Commissioner Gomez. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Daniels that we move this item, continue this item to a date uncertain. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. The ayes have it, and we will continue that item to a date uncertain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now up to Agenda item number three, which is PLN 220226, the Fernandez Brothers Incorporated Vertical Bridge. Staff, are you prepared for this next item?
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair Deal. Christina Vu, project planner for PLN 220226, Fernandez Brothers Incorporated. The project is located in front of 975 San Juan Grade Road within the greatest-lineness area plan, and zoned for farmland with a minimum building site of 40 acres. The subject parcel runs parallel to Old Stage Road with a project site situated closer to San Juan Grade Road. The applicant requests approval of a news permit and design approval to allow the installation of an 80-foot wireless communication facility with a faux lattice tower design and associated equipment within a fenced enclosed leased area. The proposed facility will comply with prevailing Federal Communication Commission standards for limiting human exposure to radio frequency energy. for limiting human exposure to radio frequency energy. The main objective of the proposed wireless is to close the coverage gap shown in Figure One. Illustrated in the dark magenta color in Figure Two, the proposed facility will fill said gap and service approximately 4,639 users, as well as ensure the area's public safety infrastructure by facilitating wireless communication of the community's police, firefighters, and other emergency personnel. The applicant used a one-mile search ring to search for potential locations to meet the coverage needs, focusing on a northeast five locations were researched, and ultimately four of those locations were not pursued due to lack of response from landlords, electrical safety requirements, and unagreeable leasing terms. The nearest co-location opportunity is approximately 2.5 miles away. The existing facility is outside the search ring and is in the opposite direction of the area that needs coverage. Additionally, the proposed facility is designed to have a co-location capability with room for two more carriers. An attempt to move the facility further from the road setback of San Juan Grade, staff suggests that locating antennas on one of the many existing PG&E lattice towers to the north. This would require access terms between the landlord. However, the applicant was unsuccessful in negotiating appropriate terms, and staff verified this by direct contact with the landlord. A turn locations on the subject parcel was also looked at. The option of mounting antennas on either of the two PG&E lattice towers on the subject parcel was discussed. However, it would result in facility being closer to Old Stage Road and require more land disturbance for access. The applicant then ultimately confirmed that going on high-voltage PG&E towers was not feasible because the towers are not engineered in a manner that would allow antennas to be attached due to load capacity. Though the subject parcel, though the subject property is not in a designated visual sensitive area, it was located within view of Old Stage Road, which is designated as a scenic road in the Greater Salinas Area Plan. A visual assessment was conducted on November 17, 2022, and the facility height was simulated by a raised balloon, and staff drove along portions of San Juan Grade, Old Stage, and Crazy Horse Canyon. It was concluded that the wireless facility would be visible without aid from approximately one-third of a mile away from the site on San Juan Grade Road. The wireless facility was also visible for portion of Old Stage Road and Crazy Horse Canyon Road. To evaluate potential visual clutter, photo simulations of three designs were submitted, which included a mono elm, faux lattice tower, and a standard monopole. The photo sims here illustrate views from Old Stage Road looking northwest. The land itself is relatively flat, surrounded by vegetation half the size of the facility. The mono elm protrudes from the existing vegetation appears out of place as is bulk in size. The lattice tower and monopole are more in line with the character of farmland. However, as seen here, the monopole can appear top-heavy, especially once occupied by two other carriers below. The lattice tower creates a better visual transition by blending in with the surrounding environment and existing lattice towers nearby. The same can be seen in alternative view for the facility from San Juan Grade looking northeast. To maintain the visual integrity of views of Old Stage Road, the lattice tower design was selected to move forward with. The project was not referred to LOAC since there is no LOAC in the Greater Salinas Area Plan. However, being on farmland, the project was referred to the Agricultural Advisory Committee for review. On August 24, 2023, the committee voted unanimously to support the project and found that it would not conflict with the surrounding agricultural uses. Staff concludes that the proposed project is consistent with the 2010 Monterey County General Plan, Greater Salinas Area Plan, and Zoning Code Title 21, and that the site is suitable for the proposed wireless facility. Staff recommends the commissioners find that project qualifies for a Class III categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15303 of CECL guidelines and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit and design approval allowing the installation of an 80-foot wireless communication facility with a faux lattice tower design and associated equipment within a fenced enclosed leased area. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Much appreciated. This is the time for commissioners to ask technical questions of staff to clarify their understanding of the project. Are there commissioners who would care to do so? Commissioner Roberts?
In reading the Agricultural Advisory Committee minutes, it looks like they considered an elm, elm design? And I'm wondering when that design changed and if they had recommendations, and that's why it changed?
For the elm tree, we felt that was a little out of place when it first submitted, and then we asked for alternative designs from the applicant. That's when we presented the three, and ultimately we decided to move this forward with the lattice tower.
So staff decided, the Ag Committee didn't see the...
They saw all three.
They saw all three, they didn't have an opinion? Okay, thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you. Through the chair, can we see the coverage maps again? The pink or magenta page? I was just hoping you could walk me through Figure One versus Figure Two.
So this is without the existing carrier, so this is the coverage that the T-Mobile is trying to fill?
Hmm.
And this is a site with the proposed facility? So the magenta, it's the potential increase of the coverage?
Right. So my question then is that just that location, it's a one-mile radius around the site is the circle, I'm assuming, is still in place. So just those several square miles is 4,000 additional?
Yes, that's correct.
Help me understand that. It's, sorry. Help me understand that if you can. Thank you.
Through the chair, just to clarify, the question was that the radius shown on the coverage map would provide your...
My question is that in the staff report, I believe it stated that there is an additional 4,000 people who use T-Mobile that would benefit from this project. And I'm just trying to understand the density of that location. Are we counting people who drive by? Like, where are the 4,000 people? Maybe if it's all farmland?
Surprisingly, probably the people that are driving by using 101, because going from San Juan Road to Crazy Horse, that's access to 101.
Okay. And did we get any input from public safety officials like fire and police? I mean, where's, it stated that they would benefit from this. Was there input from any of those entities?
Generally, whenever someone calls 911, it's offloaded if there's additional towers, because the emergency is called every single, doesn't matter what carrier you have, it uses any carrier nearby. So even if you have Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, it'll use that tower.
So is there, through the chair, AT&amp;T or Verizon coverage at this location?
No, currently, no.
So there's no coverage at all? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, staff. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I was wondering if you had any more information on the communication that happened between the applicant and the superintendent of Laguna Nita Elementary School? Because on page two, it said that they met to discuss concerns, but there was no more information about where those concerns...
The main concern of the superintendent was, they have a future proposal for expanding the school across the street, so his main concern is that conflict of construction-wise. But they spoke with the superintendent, and he is in support of the project, and he also appreciates the lattice tower design.
Is there any other communications that would back that?
There's an email that's uploaded. I can pull up the email if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the email that was sent from Daniel Stone.
He's, thank you, number one. Number two, it says his main concern was construction. I was just curious what his other concerns were.
Just visual.
To that, it was just visual. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Anybody else with a question before we go to public comment? Commissioner Gomez?
This is more of a general question. I think it relates kind of to Commissioner Daniels' question about the construction of the towers, I think generally speaking, and the range, right? I think you're talking about a pretty small range for a tower, a sizable tower. How is the determination made in terms of the technology? Is there any better technology that could provide a bigger range for that kind of a tower in that neighborhood? That's really, and I don't, obviously, probably beyond our expertise here, but that, you know, I like to have, if we're approving, there's a need, obviously, for emergency services and for people that use cell phones. But the question is, is there better technology that could cover, have more coverage, so we could have less of those towers and have better coverage?
Thank you. Do we know about the coverage as related to the coverage gap?
I would like to defer that to the applicant.
Very well. We'll hope that the applicant can help us with that particular question. Is that okay, Commissioner Gomez? Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one on the commission, I'd like to move over to the applicant or applicant's representative. If you'd come forward and speak your piece, that would be great.
My name is Bill Lewis. I'm with Assurance Development, and we represent the applicant, Vertical Bridge. I do have a presentation. I don't know if we can pull it up, but I do have handouts as well if needed. You can go to the next slide. So as staff presented, we're proposing an 80-foot-tall wireless communications facility, which is going to be disguised as a self-support lattice tower. The tower will allow for T-Mobile to fill much-needed service needs in the farming area north of the Salinas, along with San Grade Road, Crazy Horse Canyon Road, and areas in the vicinity. Currently, as shown in the coverage maps, the area has poor wireless coverage today. The tower will provide the infrastructure needed to support quality wireless services for the benefit of residences, businesses, farms, first responders, as well as a nearby school. The tower has been designed to support additional wireless providers without the need for additional towers in the area. The tower has also been designed to reflect feedback that we received from Monterey County and to minimize impact on the primary agricultural use in the area. I want to talk about the importance of network coverage as well as T-Mobile's needs in the area. Demand for wireless data is expected to grow by 20% per year through 2028. 97% of Americans have a cellphone, and 85% own a smartphone. Over 72% of households rely on wireless as their only means of communication. Over 81% of children live in a wireless-only household, and over 85% of renters live in a wireless-only household. Additionally, there are over 240 million calls that are made to 911 in the U.S. each year, and many of those areas, about 80% or more, are from wireless devices. What I'm showing here is the coverage maps on the left. I think this was discussed earlier, but on the left is the current coverage. The light pink shade essentially indicates a lack of coverage. The darker shades are increased coverage. On the right, you can see with the proposed design that this will fill a much-needed coverage gap in the area. In addition, I don't know if you received the declaration that was sent this morning, but I have copies. It's from, it's a declaration that was submitted to planning that was prepared by the Network RF Engineer Manager for T-Mobile stating that a tower with a 76-foot top of antenna height is needed to meet T-Mobile's coverage needs in the area. There was one question that the board asked, I believe, about the amount of users in the area. I think it was 4,000. You had questions about that. It's going to cover not only residences, the school, people that work in the fields, but also daily commuters that travel along the two main arteries right there. Go to the next slide. This is just a brief overview of what the proposal will look like. One of the design constraints that we had, not only from not having a lot of landlord interest in allowing us to lease space, but also there is a wetlands, multiple wetlands in the area as well as a floodplain. So our facility, as you can see on the right-hand side, there's a shaded area that is a floodplain area. So we are going to have to raise the foundation slightly so that we are out of that, but essentially anything else on that property locating on, you know, further south is going to be prohibited from a potential floodplain issue. I believe this was also presented by staff earlier, but it's photo simulations of what the tower is going to look like within the area. The view on the left is the existing, the view on the right is the proposed, and you can kind of see that with the design that we're proposing, especially on this view, because it doesn't have a lot of foliage like the mono elm proposal did. It kind of blends in a little bit more with the background. On the next slide, you can see the view from the east as well, because that road is much further away. You can see that the view of the tower is going to blend in to the natural area. So we did evaluate other alternatives within the area. We reached out to all the property owners shown in this aerial map, and of those, the proposal that we have in front of you, we feel is going to be the least impactful to the community while also achieving the network curve that T-Mobile is achieving. This slide shows the National Wetlands inventory area as well as FEMA flood maps. You can see some of the constraints that we had in terms of finding a suitable location that would not be impacted by either national wetlands or the floodplains. We did also look at nearby PG&E lattice towers. As you can see, this lattice tower is located at the corner of Crazy Horse Canyon Road and San Juan Grade Road. The property owner, the underlying property owner, was contacted in 2012, and she provided a written email explaining that there was no interest in moving forward with our proposal. The email was sent to the planning department, and further, the planning department contacted the owner again in September 2023, and the owner emphasized that she is still not interested in moving forward. Lastly, the lattice tower shown here, you can see, is located within a potential wetlands area. So even if the property owner was interested, we had some environmental constraints with its location. This is another lattice tower on the same property owner. You can see on the left where it's shown, on the right, these are maps from the National Wetlands website, also showing that the facility would be in or near a potential wetlands And then the last PG&E tower that we looked at was on our current subject property, and you can see where it's located within the... and you can see where it's located within the, the floodplain area. We did run a radio frequency emissions report by a third party that was provided to, to planning. I believe it's in the, the packet. But this, based on the report, the maximum RF exposure level to the nearby community at ground level would be less than 10% of the FCC limits for EME emissions. I did write down that, two other questions that were brought up. So one of the questions that I wrote down is, this tower, is there a way to provide better coverage than what we're proposing? Whether better technology? So these, these facilities are line of sight. So in order to get better coverage, we would need a higher height facility. If we're at a lower coverage, obviously, it's going to be a more compromised coverage because it is line of sight. The last question that one of the commissioners asked was regarding the school. I was actually the representative that met with the superintendent. I walked the property with him. The main concern that he had is that he's going to be building another facility next to the current school, and they're in their entitlement process, I believe, with the, with DSA. His concern was mainly that he didn't want our project to hold up that review in terms of aesthetics, visual impact. We did walk the property with him, explain the process, explain the construction timeline, and he was fine with the, with the proposal. I'm here to answer any other questions that you guys might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I was wondering if the parents and staff at Laguna Nitas were provided the opportunity to, one, hear about this project and just have it on their radar, but ask questions and provide feedback the same way that the superintendent was afforded?
Our intention was to reach out to the school and discuss it with the superintendent, give him an opportunity if, if that was something that they wanted. But we did not have a formal public community meeting, but we did give the, the superintendent an opportunity to, to ask any questions and be available if, if there was concerns.
Yes, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. Through the chair. So just to clarify that the parents and staff are unaware that this project, largely unaware that this project is potentially moving forward across the street and potentially next door because the building, there's going to be another facility right next to it, correct?
There, I believe there is another school facility. I don't know the details of that. The project was posted. I believe there is a posting along the two main corridors of, of the proposal. So there is, there is public notice.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mendoza?
You mentioned, I guess, that there's another tower out there as well. How far away is that tower?
Are you referring to the tower that was indicated on staff's report?
That is correct.
I believe on the report, it said it was about 2.5 miles away.
When, when the EME emissions report was made, did they take into consideration both towers or just the tower that's proposed?
They do take into account any existing wireless emissions within the vicinity. A site that's 2.5 miles away won't have any impact on it.
How far? Now, it, it's really, really close to the school. Is radiation a problem or anything like that? Should, is that a concern or was there any studies made just to make sure that it's not going to affect the children?
I just stop for half a second here and ask counsel to weigh in on that question.
Yeah, before we go down the rabbit hole with all these questions, I do want to let the commission know. You may have been told this information before, but as a reminder, this area is controlled by federal law. It's the Federal Telecommunications Act. And when it, within that act, there's a section saying that no state or local government may regulate the placement, construction, or modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. So that's an area that federal law states that you can't go into, basically.
I, I do want to state, though, we do comply with FCC regulations in terms of RF emissions. On the radio frequency emissions report, it, and I highlighted it on my, on my slide, this facility falls at about 9.6% of the maximum allowable limits at ground level. There is another, the second sentence, which I didn't highlight, is calculated at the second level of the nearby, the nearest building, which would be the, the school. We fall, and this is if you're at the second story. I believe it's a one-story building, so if you're at the roof. We are 12% of the maximum allowable by the FCC. So we do comply with, with FCC guidelines on EME emissions. Another thing regarding the school, one of the comments that the superintendent made, as you, you are likely aware, there was a lot of flooding in this area last year. We had a significant amount of rain. The school flooded. There was a couple inches of water, the superintendent told me. And, you know, in situations like that, the need for emergency response, or at least calling the parents to pick up the kids, is, is going to be of more utmost importance. And this facility would provide not only coverage for T-Mobile's users, but also coverage for 911 services in the event of an emergency.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. Because it was just mentioned again that you fall well below the FCC's standards, I just wanted to know, when was the last time that that FCC standard was updated with, based on current studies?
I'm, I'm not aware of the last time that, that it was updated.
Through the chair, I am aware it was updated in 1996. So I just wanted to put that out there, even though we're not supposed to be voting on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. I would add simply the caution of, of your last comment is very important because if we were to cite that as a reason in a decision, it would be cause to vacate that decision. So just understanding that is always good, but just be sure that when you're considering, that is not a reason for your decision. Commissioner Shaw?
So I'm going to say this now, because I, last time I missed the window, I guess, to say it. I'll be abstaining from this vote. I'm unable to make an unbiased decision.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Are there any further questions for the applicant from the commission? Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the posting of public notifications. You said there were a couple of postings in the area, and where were they posted or?
I did see one on San Juan when I walked the property, but I'll let staff answer where it was posted. I believe it was, if you have it. The, the main one was in front of the subject property on San Juan, but I believe there was another one on, on the opposite side of the property as well.
Steph, would you mind weighing in on that, if you have any comment?
Chair, could I just add, could they also comment on just the public notice process? Because I think the county planning has control of the notice process, right, in addition to the postings?
Thank you.
Through the chair, we did receive the affidavit of posting for this item, and it was on San Juan Grade Road, Crazy Horse Canyon Road, and Old Stage Road.
And, and I guess, I was trying to be more like precise. Was it placed by a mailbox? Was it placed in a, by a store, by some public facility where the public would have access and not just drive by and, and it's posted in some private mailbox or some private area? So I wasn't quite sure what the posting.
Well, and through the chair, this is a notice public hearing, so this notice went in a local paper, I'm assuming. Can you provide detail on that, staff?
Is that a yes, or do we don't have it? I think the staff is looking at that and would be glad, probably take a second and see if they can come back with that information.
Yeah. And, and I, I think question in terms of, I believe I heard a figure close to 4,200 in terms of possible users using that frequency or?
Yeah, so there are roughly estimated based off of population maps and, and user counts that the facility, the proposal would increase and provide coverage for that amount of users. That is not only for, you know, nearby residences, people working in the area, but also people traveling along the main two, two corridors there, San Juan Grade and, and Crazy Horse.
Through the chair. And, and is that a number that relates to, let's say, the other providers like Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, whatever those providers? Is the number 42 as a combination of all those users, or is that just for T-Mobile, and that number could increase if they, if the other providers are able to use a tower?
I, I don't know the, the network coverage of the other carriers because it's proprietary information that, that we don't have access to, so I can't quite comment on that. But I, what I can say is that this facility is going to be designed for colocation so that other carriers can also locate on the tower as well.
But, but I guess it's, it would cover about 4,200 for T-Mobile users, or, or that's just a general?
That, that would be for T-Mobile.
Okay.
And it's, it's an estimated.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, then I'm just going to follow up on a question that I asked earlier, which is, when we looked at the maps, the coverage maps, and they're pink, and I know T-Mobile is pink. So just to clarify, the area that you're covering does not currently serve, is not currently served by AT&amp;T or Verizon. There's no, no service in the area. You'd be providing service.
I, I believe staff made a comment on that. I can't provide comments on the other carriers because I, I don't know what their coverage maps are. That, that information is proprietary, and I, I just don't know the details of it. The maps that we are showing is specific to T-Mobile.
That was my concern. So we're putting an 80-foot tower in new service, providing colocation. It's, I understand the opportunity, and I understand the opportunity for T-Mobile, but the argument is that there's no, no service. So do we have some, perhaps just from the, the school, from others? I mean, I guess this is a question for staff through the chair. Is there a need for service in this area? And if so, how do we know that?
Through the chair. Looking at the colocation, the closest one is about 2.5 miles away. That one is Verizon and AT&amp;T. So that's the closest one.
Commissioner Daniels?
Through the chair. So 2.5 miles away can mean various things, depending on the line of sight. So it doesn't really mean anything if you can see it. So do we, do we have any information about coverage in this area? And again, not to go down a rabbit hole, but I think we had a, an ad hoc committee perhaps that was going to be working on this, and, and we were going to wait to have further applications like this until we did that work, because these are questions that come up all the time. We understand the business interest of a service carrier. That makes sense, but there are other impacts that need to be considered. And so it's really important that we know what the service coverage is of a location. Oftentimes, we have folks that are able, because they're making the comment, they live, they drive by, they're very clear. Yes, I lose my cell service for 10 minutes as I'm driving down 101, and that's, that's good evidence for us. I'm not, I'm just not seeing that here, so I'm trying to understand whether or not this is needed in the area.
I, I couldn't make a comment, a general comment. I, I drove the area. I've been out there multiple times. I have a work phone and a personal phone. On my work phone, it's a different carry. I'm not going to indicate which one, but I had compromised coverage. It was difficult to make calls, so I know there is a need. In addition, I, I want to kind of highlight the relationship. We spoke about Vertical Bridge being the applicant, and then we're also talking about T-Mobile. Vertical Bridge is a tower company. Their business model is to build infrastructure for multiple carriers to use. It doesn't make sense to build a one-carrier site. It's just not a good business sense. So if, you know, we're going in there, there's been analysis done that there is a, a need potentially for future carriers in, in the area. But in terms of giving you coverage maps from other carriers, that's not something that we have access to, unfortunately.
I would just weigh in here. Yes, you do, because every tower that goes up has to show us coverage maps. And so if there's a tower that's gone up, there's in the public record a coverage map for that tower, regardless of carrier or LSC. So it is not, it is not appropriate to say it's not possible to get it. It simply hasn't been considered in this particular setting at this time. So just weighing in on that. Commissioner Mendoza, did you have a question?
It was more of a comment. The service there is terrible. I used to drive it every day.
There's evidence for you, Commissioner Daniels.
That, I live pretty close on, on the other side of the hill there, Crazy Horse, and coverage in general by all service providers is probably terrible.
Commissioner Gomez also adds some evidence there. Commissioner Shaw?
I don't know if I can still ask questions or not.
If you have questions of the applicant that will clarify your understanding, please do.
Thank you. Question. So that, in that mock-up showing the tower, was that with the potential two more carriers added, or is that just with the T-Mobile? Will there be more on that tower at a future date?
The photo simulations?
Yes.
That was a one, one carrier.
Do you have a mock-up available showing that the done with the other two carriers that are?
I don't have photo simulations done of that, but on our, our site plan, it does show the locations of potential future carriers.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Roberts?
I have just a general question because in my experience here, we haven't had any colocation, even though we encourage everybody to do it, and everybody says they're going to do it. And so I'm curious if you are representing a company that builds towers with the purpose of colocation.
Correct.
Your experience is, if you have experience in Monterey County where there's any colocation that maybe we aren't aware of, or if, you know, if it's starting to happen, if this is new technology, just general information, I guess.
It's not new technology, colocation possibilities, and colocation has been going on for, for a long time. This is, our firm represents Vertical Bridge. This is one of the first applicants, applications that we've been in front of planning commission with this, with this, with our client in Monterey County. But I, I know, and we, we represent Vertical Bridge on multiple areas within Northern California, Sacramento, San Francisco markets. A lot of our facilities that we are proposing, before they're even constructed, have a second applicant coming on that are interested.
Terrific. And I have one question, and it's a trivial question, but what's faux about this lattice tower? It looks like a perfectly real lattice tower to me.
Yes, it is a, it is a lattice tower. I think a faux transmission, you know, so it appears like a transmission line. I think that was intense of the wording.
Why are we, never mind. Why do we want to put up something that looks like a transmission tower? In what way is that a good thing?
I think the thought process when working with, with the planning department was there's existing PG&E lattice towers that are very similar, and so it would blend in to the existing infrastructure in the area.
They're not a desirable feature of the landscape for most of us. That is my, my concern there. It's, it's not important, but I appreciate it. If there are no more, Commissioner Shaw, yeah?
Thank you. I, I did read the, everything that you went through to try and work with PG&E and the constraints that made that seem not viable, but I'm curious to know, if this were for some outlandish reason to just not happen, would you completely abandon this area for putting in a tower, or would you then move on to trying to make it work with PG&E? Is that completely out of the question? Is that something that you guys never do, or are there instances where that is the only option, and you have to have maybe less stuff on? less stuff on the tower, and you work within those constraints?
So there's multiple constraints that we face. So there's PG&E lattice towers on the subject property that we're proposing our project on, as well as across the street. The property owner across the street was not interested in allowing us to move forward with our proposal. In addition, the two lattice towers that were shown on her property are within or relatively close to national wetlands. We don't want to disturb those. We don't build within wetland areas because there's national environmental compliance that we have to comply with. The PG&E lattice tower that is on our subject property is within a flood plain. We did run what's called a base flood elevation study, a FEMA certification that determines that the heights that we need to be above so that we're not within a flood plain is 242 feet above ground sea level, not from current grade, so above sea level. That transmission tower that we showed is 230 feet is the ground level. We did have it surveyed that area with a surveyor, which would mean that if we were to go on that facility, we would have to raise our cabinet equipment over 13 feet on a raised platform so that if there was flooding, it wouldn't impact the facility. That's one design constraint. The other design constraint is the weight capacity on the tower. PG&E allows location above the transmission lines as well as below. Above the transmission line, they have really strict weight requirements, which T-Mobile's equipment that they're deploying would not comply with it. So we would not be able to locate above the transmission line. Below the transmission line, there is additional weight constraints. Now, less of a constraint than at the top, but where we would locate would be much, would be lower than our current proposed facility, which would compromise coverage. So not only from just a general PG&E constraint, design constraint, there is national wetlands constraints in terms of actually putting a facility at that location. And to answer your question, Commissioner, there's no other options in this area. We have reached out to all the property owners in the area, planning even reached out to the same property owners, at least one of them, to verify that. If this project was denied, I don't see any other solution to cover this area.
Thank you. Appreciate it, and we'll certainly allow you an opportunity to respond if there are questions from the public. I'd like to move on to public comment at this time, generally. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, is there anyone on Zoom?
Through the chair, yes. There is Moncrief and Hart with their hand raised.
Let's go ahead and recognize Moncrief and Hart for comment, please. You have three.
Good morning. This is Paul Moncrief. Thank you for your time. I represent the landowner, Fernandez Brothers. Regarding Fernandez Brothers and the location, they're very willing to locate anywhere on their property, but as Mr. Lewis detailed, there's just no other spot that's suitable, given the agricultural operations and the concerns of wetlands and those sorts of things. Perhaps more importantly to me, my wife teaches at Albany Need a School, first and second grade, and I can tell you, there is no cell reception there. We have an AT&amp;T plan, and when she's there, I can't reach her. And she's often there on weekends by herself. And given the remote location, that is somewhat disconcerting to me. There are instances where people will see her car and stop and knock on her door and ask for directions, and she has no contact with the outside world. And that, this tower solves that. I don't speak for the school, but I can tell you anecdotally that the staff supports this for the same reason. They're kind of out there in, not the middle of nowhere, but close to it, and having communication, reliable communication is very important to them. But thank you. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. I see a hand up from Ken Lyons on the Zoom platform. Ken?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Deal, and thank you, Commissioners. I'm actually one of the agents for the applicant. My name is Ken Lyons of Wireless Boss Group on behalf of T-Mobile and Vertical Bridge. I wasn't able to speak during the Q and A period between the Commission and the, and my colleague, Bill, regarding the questions you have, but I did have some answers with regard to those questions. I just want to, would you like me to provide some additional context to those questions, or would you prefer to wait, since I'm not a member of the public, if you will?
Let's wait and see if the Commission still has questions when we get back to that point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue from the public? Do we have any emails on it?
We have no emails.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period and ask the Commission if they have questions that they need answered from the applicant that were not answered previously. Seeing no hands, I'm going to go ahead and close that part of it, too. Come back to staff. Staff, do you have any comments or clarifications you'd like to make based on what we heard in public comment?
Staff does not.
Thank you. All right, we're back to the Commission. And any discussion?
Through the chair, did you have an answer on the notice, the public notice?
Thank you, Ms. Donlin. Do we have an answer on the public notice?
Yes. So the public notice was published in the weekly newspaper on September 14, 2023. This item went before the PC on September 27, 2023, which during the hearing, it got continued to a date certain of November 8, 2023. And at the November 8 hearing, it also got continued to a date certain of today, January 10, 2024.
Thank you. Commissioner Gomez?
I just wanted to, kind of in general, I wanted to see if you briefly comment our public notice requirements, obviously, in terms of sending out letters. What else do we do to get people in the neighborhood to know that there's an issue being brought up that might affect them before the planning commission?
Staff, would you like to answer that?
Yes, through the chair, Anna King with HCD Planning. For public hearings and administrative permits, our public noticing requirements include posting on and near the site in three places, posting in a local paper, which is typically the weekly, and mailing out of notices for residences within 300 feet of the subject property.
Thank you. Further discussion? Commissioner Mendoza, I'm sorry.
No further discussion. I would actually like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation approved PLN 220226, Fernandez Brothers.
Thank you. There's a motion of approval to approve from Commissioner Mendoza. Is there a second for that? Commissioner Getzelman seconds that motion. Is there discussion of the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and move to the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. And we have an abstention. Commissioner Shaw abstains. So the motion carries, and I'm looking at eight to one. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Eight to one. All right, we're going to take a 15-minute break here and be back at 10:20 for item number four. Thank you all.
Reconvene, that would be wonderful. So just a note for anyone who might not have been here at the beginning. Item number four, that was one point on our agenda. The Porter-Valejo mention has been removed from our agenda. So we're going to be moving right now to agenda item number five, which is PLN 230035, the Ben Guard Family Partnership at All. And I think Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you. And I do have a property that's, I think, between 300 and 500 feet from a location, the proposed location. And out of abundance of caution, I might have a conflict of interest on this particular item. So I'm going to have to recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. We will miss your expertise and understand your reasoning. All right, staff, take it away.
Alex, please share staff right.
Good morning, Chair Deal and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Fiona Jensen. I am the project planner for PLN 230035, Ben Guard Family Partnership. The 188-acre property is located at the intersection of Skonberg Parkway and Alisal Road, adjacent to the city of Salinas, and has been utilized as agricultural row crop production for approximately 86 years. The property also currently contains 16 farmworker-employee housing apartment units, six farmworker-single-family dwellings, a common laundry area, and various agricultural support structures. The property is within the Greater Salinas Area Plan and is zoned farmland 40 acres per unit. The proposed project will be located on a 5.24-acre portion of the 188-acre parcel shown here in blue. The applicant is requesting approval of a use permit to allow construction of three two-story, 16,286-square-foot agricultural employee-housing apartment buildings, containing one manager's unit and 45 residential units. Each apartment unit would be suitable to house eight individuals and provide essential needs such as kitchens and restroom amenities. The proposed project would accommodate up to 360 farmworker employees. Required grading includes 4,700 cubic yards of cut and 4,700 cubic yards of fill to be balanced onsite. The proposed project would be occupied primarily during the Salinas Valley harvest season from April to November. The project will be made available to domestic agricultural employees as well as employees working in the United States with an H2A visa. These employees will be transported via private van pool service to various agricultural fields throughout Monterey County. Proposed site improvements include a laundry facility, recreational room, turf area for informal outdoor sports, 30 bicycle racks, onsite parking, perimeter fencing, and landscaping. The proposed project includes two pedestrian and vehicular access routes as well as one emergency access route. The primary point of ingress and egress will connect to a driveway serving the existing agricultural employee housing via Alisal Road, while a new driveway along Skonberg Parkway will serve as secondary ingress and egress. Emergency vehicular ingress and egress will also be provided via a new driveway from Skonberg Parkway. The project's daily trips are anticipated to be considerably less than standard apartments because many of the employees will not own their own vehicles and are more likely to rely on the provided bus and van pool service for transportation to and from work. Outbound van pool transportation will occur by 5:00 a.m., while inbound van pool trips would occur between 12:00 and 4:00 p.m. A bus service would be provided to employees to transport them to shopping, recreation, and religious services on the weekends and during weekday evenings. Buses would be stored off-site and driven to the site each day, while vans would be parked onsite. The prepared traffic impact analysis concluded that the proposed project, which will be occupied for approximately nine months, will generate 55 daily trips with four trips in the morning peak hour and 16 trips in the evening peak hour. If occupied for 12 months, the proposed project will generate approximately 75 daily trips. Based on the acreage of the site, the types grown onsite and assuming cultivation occurs on the property for approximately eight months out of the year, the existing water demand for the project site is approximately 20.9 acre-feet per year. An onsite well currently irrigates the property's agricultural operation and draws from the Salinas Valley Eastside Aquifer Basin. As proposed, the project would be served potable water from Alco Water Service. As proposed, the project will only be occupied for nine months and demand approximately 13.2 acre-feet of water per year. This represents a 7.7 acre-foot-per-year water demand reduction over baseline conditions and thus reduces the demand placed on the Eastside Aquifer Subbasin. If the apartments were occupied for 12 months, the project would still result in a reduced water demand when compared to baseline conditions. Consequently, the proposed project is considered consistent with the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency's Groundwater Sustainability Plan, which seeks to achieve long-term sustainability within this sub-basin. The proposed project design incorporates a 200-foot agricultural buffer. The Agricultural Commissioner's Office has expressed support of the buffer, which aims to protect the surrounding agricultural land and reduce the effect of agricultural operations on the proposed residential use. The proposed project was scheduled for the November 16, 2023 Agricultural Advisory Committee meeting. However, this meeting was canceled due to a lack of quorum. The AAC guidelines do not address or require that projects be rescheduled for the AAC if a quorum is not met. The project has been processed in an expedited manner due to being a Board of Supervisors' high-priority project, farmworker housing. And to ensure application processing timeliness, HD Planning Staff, County Council, and the Agricultural Commissioner's Office agreed that the item should not be rescheduled for the AAC. The property is located within the Salinas Municipal Airport influence area and thus was subject to Airport Land Use Commission review. The Monterey County Airport Land Use Commission found the proposed project consistent with the 1982 Airport Land Use Plan for the Salinas Municipal Airport on October 23, 2023, subject to four conditions of approval that had been incorporated into the project as condition numbers 18 through 21. County staff prepared a draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration for this project, which was circulated for public review from November 14 to December 14, 2023. The draft ISMD identified potentially significant impacts to biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal-cultural resources. Implementation of mitigation measure number one and condition number 17 would reduce potentially significant impacts on special-status plant species to a level of less than significant. The potential to impact archaeological and tribal resources would be less than significant with implementation of mitigation measure number two, which requires an on-call archaeological monitor, and mitigation number three, which requires an onsite tribal monitor during initial ground disturbance. Condition number six has been applied to address comments received from the Monterey County Environmental Health Bureau related to the need for the Department of Toxic Substance Control to finalize their review. No additional public comment was received during the public review period. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt a mitigated negative declaration pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15074 and approve a use permit to allow construction of three 16,268-square-foot agricultural employee-housing apartment buildings and associated site improvements, and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Are there any questions for staff from the commission? Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you, Chair Deal. A couple of questions. One is just clarification about the existing housing that's on the site. That's all going to remain, or is it removed for this project?
Through the chair, yes. The existing agricultural housing, both the single-family dwellings as well as the apartment buildings, will remain onsite.
Okay. And then the second question through the chair was just the exact number in terms of the reduction in water. If these units were to be occupied 12 months of the year versus nine months, what's the total acre-foot per year?
The total reduction over baseline conditions would be approximately 3.3 acre-feet per year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Gomez?
This is more of a question because I remember the board of supervisors-- In the staff report, there's reference to the Board of Supervisors' high-priority project. And obviously, farmworker housing is-- I'm not sure if that's the only one. And what does that mean, I guess, in terms of policy?
Through the chair, policy-wise, it doesn't change how staff may apply and interpret the general plan as well as zoning ordinance, and in this case, the Greater Salinas Area Plan. But in terms of timeliness and priority for staff-level workload, this was put to the top of my workload and processed quicker than other applications may be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
First of all, there are page numbers on every page of this packet, and I love that. So whoever-- Thank you. And so with that, on page 47 of the packet, there's a map of the property site. And I'm curious to know-- I understand that the housing is remaining. And I'm curious to know if that picture is a picture of the existing farmworker housing on the property. So that's one. The second question I have is regarding pesticide drift, since we heard that in the last housing development plan or application that we had similar to this. And obviously, the fields are right up against this housing and would be right up against this proposed housing. And I don't know if the advisory committee was-- who commented on that, or if it was the ag commissioner. I can't remember how that happened. So that's the second question. And then the third question is-- I think these usually come before us with development plans. Now I'm forgetting the actual name of it, my favorite thing. And I didn't see it in this application. So I'm curious if that has changed, or maybe I'm misremembering.
The-- Yes, page 47 of the staff report does show the existing agricultural housing apartment buildings as well as the single-family dwellings, which are closer to Alisal Road. The Agricultural Commissioner's Office did support the 200-foot buffer, which is intended to help protect the residential use from any pesticide drift, as well as the landscape plans, which would include various vegetative screening along the perimeter. And then as for the general development plan, the farmland zoning district doesn't require a general development plan for this type of project. And therefore, the applicant had originally proposed one, and I, as staff, informed them that it wasn't needed.
Okay. Have they been included in the past?
There have been certain applications that have included--
For the housing-- Specifically, these farmworker housing applications. And the only reason I'm asking is because I remember it had information about timing and, you know, just if a member of the public were to pick it up, they would understand. And I guess seeing the other property uses on this site is what made me think of it. I'll think about that question, I guess. And can you just clarify-- So the 200-foot buffer is on that-- where the 2, 4, and 6 are, on that outside edge?
The agricultural buffer would be on the--
Could we perhaps pull up the--
Yeah, or whichever map, yeah, sorry.
That would be better.
Thank you.
So on-- I believe that is the northern and eastern side of the property. So those are the only two adjacent agricultural lands for the project site.
Okay, just to clarify then, in the image that I'm looking at, I think I understand then. So the image that I'm looking at on page 47 of the packet is also showing this same layout. And so that outside edge on Allen Avenue and then the back edge-- Oh, I see, the parking is part of the buffer. So there's 200 feet around it. Okay, I think I get it. Thank you very much.
And sorry, through the chair. The project does include an employee-housing plan, which does go into timing of the project as well as kind of implementation and maintenance of the project. And that fulfills a similar outcome as a general development plan.
Do you-- Can you point me to that?
The employee-housing plan is attached to the staff report as Exhibit D.
Thank you.
Is that it, Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I just had a question about the buffer because I guess I just don't quite understand-- I believe it's condition four. And it's-- I just don't understand how that's accomplished because I'm looking at not just the parking lot, which I see as part of the buffer, but I'm seeing farmland. So how is that not going to be farmed, those two odd-shaped strips? And how will that work?
Correct. These areas shown in green on the screen essentially will no longer be cultivated in the future and will ultimately become a perimeter access and maintenance route. And those areas will be put into a permanent easement to prohibit any further cultivation and ensure that it stays as either vegetative buffer or hardscape in this case.
Thank you. Can I ask one more question? I don't know if this is the right time to ask it. My only concern now is I don't see something that-- in my experience, I think, is desperately needed when you're building this intensely near other homes, which is a dust mitigation plan. And I say that not just from experience, but also because I've seen that incorporated in other projects that have come before us. And I'm wondering, how does that get applied to projects? When does it become you need to have a dust mitigation plan? Why don't I see it on more projects?
Monterey County Code, specifically Chapter 16, requires that all projects that require building permits include an erosion control and specific dust measures. They are typically included as best management practices. And so those would be required for implementation and review and approval by the county prior to issuance of the building permit.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I still don't quite understand why-- Like, in another project, it was in the conditions of approval that there be a dust-- So is it just a given that it's going to be in these? So it doesn't need to be written in the conditions?
If I could interject through the chair-- Yeah, it's required by the Monterey County Code. So it's not a required condition to require something that's already legally required. Why it's been in past ones, I'm not sure. But it could have just been a duplication of the requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Or there may have been special circumstances as well, so. Commissioner Gomez, you had an additional comment, question?
I just-- Can you put up the picture again of the site and where the current housing is as compared to where this development would go on that property?
If this image satisfies your request. So the subject property site where the three agricultural employee-housing apartment buildings is shown in blue here, just to the west of that, I guess, are 16 employee-housing apartment buildings. And then closer to Alisal Road, there are six employee-housing single-family dwellings. I'm going to use this image. Supplementally, the employee-housing apartment building units are right here. And they cover this whole area. And then the six single-family dwellings are adjacent-- directly adjacent to Alisal Road.
My last question relates to the policy, the Board of Supervisors' policy, and the reason for giving priority to farmworker housing. reason for giving priority to farm worker housing. I know there's probably a long conversation about that and why it happened. Could you summarize why the board decided to go that direction at that time?
If I may through the chair, so periodically, and I don't recall for this particular item, but periodically, the county board of supervisors will review, especially where there's issues either of special requests for expediting and/or where there may be concerns that come up in terms of how things are being processed. And so some of the other types of projects that will that will often get kind of a policy direction from the board include, so it's farm worker housing, affordable housing projects. Also oftentimes disaster recovery. Those will be kind of by policy directed to expedite those as those applications come in. In this particular case, when the discussion in particular around, at least my recollection, around agricultural housing, part of where that desire to expedite came from a project, I think one of the first ones, the Tanamira and Antle project in Speckles, that's gone up that really, that came through and there was a real desire to process that in a timely manner so that they could open and meet the next growing season, the next growing season. So I think that's where that original discussion in particular to agricultural housing came. And now we work with applicants and we treat those as high priorities and we try to work with those applicants to get those approvals to the extent feasible in time for subsequent growing seasons when we're able, if that helps.
It does. I think it speaks to the need, right? There's a, I think that's really what it speaks to. I think that, I think, I live out in Pundale and I do remember that there was hundreds of farm workers, I think, in a shed, in a shed or greenhouse that that were being housed there, obviously, just because in general, because of lack of farm worker housing, if I recall correctly.
Commissioner Shaw?
Take back what I said earlier. There was one other concern I had and I was just hoping you could explain this to me because I just don't understand what it's saying. On page 41 of the mitigated negative declaration for the initial study, it says arsenic was detected above laboratory detection limits and eight of the samples at a maximum concentration of 6.2 milligrams per kilogram, which exceeds the residential land use ESL of 0.067 milligrams per kilogram. And I was just wondering, what is the residential land use ESL? And can you just explain that statement to me? Please?
The ESL is an environmental screening level established by the Department of Toxic Substance Control. And so in this case, the arsenic levels did exceed the allowable, but they are standard levels that are found throughout the Salinas Valley. And so in this case, condition number six requires that the Department of Toxic Substance Control continue and finalize their review and essentially prove that those higher levels of arsenic are allowable in this case. We've been in communication with them over the last couple of months and they do anticipate being supportive of the higher arsenic levels.
To follow up on that, is there any discussion of required treatment? It seems to me we've had other projects where this was the case where we've had a condition requiring treatment be if it's beyond a certain level?
If additional treatment was required, it would be implemented through that same condition that requires the Department of Toxic Substance Control review. But in this case, they don't anticipate any additional mitigation or avoidance measures to be implemented.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Okay. So I asked this just because that is a huge difference between 6.2 and 0.067, which is the cutoff. And my concern would be, again, with the dust and knowing that even though there is usually dust mitigation measures taken, they're often far below what they should be and viewed, it seemingly viewed as the ceiling versus the floor, what should be done. Have there been cases where this level, there's been a similar level, because it's saying that they're similar throughout Northern California, and measures have been implemented to treat this in some way or add mitigation measures to ensure that those who are working on that site are safe and those who are going to be impacted by the dust in the neighborhood safe?
The prepared phase two environmental site assessment concluded that the metals and pesticides detected at the site are within normal backgrounds for other sites within the Monterey Bay and Salinas Valley. So they did not recommend any additional mitigation measures for these higher contaminations at the site. And for similar projects, I'm not aware of any additional mitigation that has been applied because it is typical of the soils throughout the this area of the state.
Okay. So thank you. So I guess just to clarify that because it's typical, then it's, we could say it's just accepted as norm and well, nothing we're going to do about it, basically, is what I can assume?
Subject to the Department of Toxic Substance Control's review generally, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Daniels?
One more follow-up question that I wanted to ask is regarding the residence of this potential development. If you stay on the slide you're on right now, H2A workers, is that primarily single men? Is that single men and women? Who are the intended residents in this in this development?
It would be single occupants or individuals. Generally, it is males.
Okay. And then the follow-up question is, we got some public comment and it was regarding bond repayment to the school district and such, and it referred several times to families who will be occupying these units. So at this point in time, there is no planning for families with children to be living in these units. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. And then last follow-up question, then, that's good in regards to the questions that were being asked in the in the public comment. But if circumstances change, is there flexibility with these units to be occupied 12 months out of the year by other domestic farm workers, farm worker families potentially in the future? What is the level of flexibility with the units that are being developed?
As currently proposed and drafted, the these units wouldn't preclude any additional and up to 12-month occupancy. However, as expected, these units will only be occupied for nine months. But there is no prohibition on essentially families being in there, but it's not anticipated at this time.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Through the chair, I can address the public comment letter more specifically if needed.
Please.
The bond assessments are paid on a yearly property tax bill and the subject is subject to Salinas Unified School District and Alisal Union School District fees that they are already paying. And then the project site falls outside of the Montebella Special Maintenance District and therefore, maintenance district fees are not appropriate and applicable to the site.
Commissioner Daniels?
That's very helpful. Do, just explain the ingress and egress. Do we do we drive through Montebella to get to this? Is there any shared roads or services?
There is not.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Commissioner Roberts?
I wanted to follow up on the school related question. I think you may have just answered it, but I remember with the Speckles project, that was the first time we talked about whether property tax would be paid to the school districts. And I think at the time, the applicant chose to pay it because just almost in good faith. And is that what we've continued to do with these projects? I may be misremembering that as well. So are they, I guess, what I'm wondering is, are they paying taxes to the Alisal Elementary or Union School District and the Salinas City School District as farmland or as housing?
The, they are currently paying the bond assessments associated with those school districts and those are on the yearly tax bill. But once the building permit gets issued or upon issuance, they will need to pay the more specific development fees associated with the school districts, but it's as essentially development, not as farmland.
Okay. And there's not an exemption, they're paying whatever anybody would be paying if they develop this land?
To my understanding, yes.
Yeah, and I'm shooting from the hip a little bit on this, but this issue was actually litigated with the Tanamira and Antle development. And I believe the outcome of that case was that they have to pay school impact fees on the development, which is in line with what Fiona's saying.
Thank you. I do have just one clarification that I'd like to be sure and starting by saying that I am hearing you report that although the intended use is for the H2A population, there is no limitation in the development plan that would keep this property from being used for other kinds of housing in the future, should the landowner decide to do that. Is that the case?
As proposed, this can, these apartment buildings on a permanent basis can only be used for employee, agricultural employee housing. If in the future, the property owner were to look to convert these into standard apartment buildings, separate discretionary and environmental review would be required.
And that brings up my other question, which is, I'm vaguely remembering some concern about the use of unoccupied farm worker housing in emergency situations. And is there anything in this development proposal that would limit the ability of the landowner to allow these properties to be used for housing in the case of emergencies for anyone?
If an emergency were to happen within the county, the property owner is open to discussions with the county to potentially use these apartment buildings as emergency housing, subject to certain terms and conditions. But as currently drafted, neither the environmental document or the resolution would preclude that temporary emergency housing need.
So there would be no barriers in the application before us, simply be discussion between the county and the landowners that would in any other case? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. That being the case, I think I'm going to close this question period and invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward and make a presentation if they would like to do that.
Needs a little adjustment for me. Good morning and thank you commissioners for taking the time to hear from us today. My name's Catherine Avila. I'm with Avila Construction and I'm joined by my colleagues Jeff and Mike. Maybe I'll pause for a second. Sorry, I overshot the presentation. Next slide. There we go. So I'm Catherine. You can see Jeff and Mike on the screen there, but they're also in the audience. And we are joined here by Ben Guard Ranch. We're very excited to be at this point in the project. There are multiple representatives from Ben Guard Ranch here today, including Bridgette and Joe and Pam. And I would like to introduce Barden in particular, who will tell you a little bit about Ben Guard Ranch and their history in the Salinas Valley.
Good morning. Yeah, my name is Barden Ben Guard. And as an owner, I want to thank you for this opportunity to seek approval for an important project, provide housing to our workers. As a fifth generation farmer in the Salinas Valley, we are proud of our heritage and connection to this community. I was raised a couple of miles from the project site and have worked on the land my whole life. Our workforce is an essential part of our business of producing produce to feed the nation. Over the years, rising housing costs and lack of available housing has forced many of our workers to live in overcrowded and substandard living arrangements. We have recognized that we have a unique opportunity to use some of our land to provide housing option to our workforce and provide them with a stable living environment. Many of our farms are contiguous to this project or within 12 miles or within a 12-mile radius of the project. This creates a balance of housing where the work is and reduces the amount of time spent traveling to the workplace. We believe this project has a necessary benefits to our community and business to provide a privately funded project to alleviate some of the housing problems in our community. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Next slide, please. Great. So this project is addressing a huge need in the community. I don't think this will surprise any of you that many agricultural workers in the Salinas Valley face substandard living conditions. In a recent 2018 farm worker housing study, it was identified that over 30% of farm workers live in facilities without kitchens or other dwelling units such as motels, boarding houses or barracks that may have limited access to kitchen facilities, laundries or private bathrooms. So it's the goal of projects like this one here before you today to provide quality housing with kitchens, laundry facilities and bathrooms with ample privacy to our agricultural worker community. Next slide, please. Between now and 2018, we have made strides in agricultural housing production, but there's still a long way to go. Just recently, supervisor Luis Alejo published an opinion piece in the Paheronian about agricultural worker housing in the Salinas Valley and in part cites, "Building dignified farm worker housing in California is no easy task." And I can say, I could not agree with him more. I've personally reviewed dozens and dozens of potential ag housing sites and they are a needle in the haystack to find. Next slide, please. But every once in a while, we do find a suitable site and we've been very successful with those sites so far. This is our fifth project in unincorporated Monterey County area. And by the end of March, beginning, excuse me, end of February, beginning of March of this year, we expect that 370 living units in unincorporated Monterey County will have been completed and 516 living units in total completed in this greater region. That's over 4,000 agricultural workers housed between all of those projects. This proposed project fills a need in the southeastern portion of Salinas. So you'll notice that these projects are purposely spread out throughout the valley and around Salinas to place people close to their work. Next slide, please. This project is modeled after four other successful projects that have come before it, including this one you see here, Tanamira and Spreckle, Tanamira and Antle, Speckles Crossing. This was the first project of its kind. Next one. This one that you see here in Greenfield. All these projects are outfitted with quality interiors, including wood cabinets, solid surface tops and suitable quantities of appliances for the quantity of people living in the units. Next slide. We also have outdoor recreation areas. Those can include seating areas, barbecue pits and sports courts. So whenever we propose one of these projects, we want to be very aware of the existing community and how the project will interact with that existing community. This project is just on the county city line with the city of Salinas. So we've been in close coordination with the city of Salinas, in particular for encroachment permits, for utility connections and for sidewalk and driveway improvements. We've also been coordinating in specific, a piece of land between the existing roundabout improvements and the proposed new project. And you see that piece of land here. So with our project, we're proposing that the existing chain link fence surrounding that side of the apartments on Sconberg be removed and a new fence be installed to match the new project. We're also proposing a portion of sidewalk between the new project and the existing sidewalk network near the roundabout and a pedestrian gate between those existing apartments and the existing sidewalk network. All right. The existing apartments will be getting the benefit of some of those improvements I just mentioned, like the cosmetic improvements to the fence and new landscaping and sidewalk connection. And in addition, they will be connected to the greater sewer system and taken off of septic tanks that have had maintenance problems in the past. Next. So with this project, we felt it was very important to engage in community outreach early. So we actually started reaching out to people before we even had an application into the county. That includes some of the folks you see here on the screen and we're proud to have endorsements by these folks and some of them, I think, are here today to speak with you. But we really value their feedback. They're great partners in thought for me and for the rest of the project team as we start to conceive these projects. Next. But most importantly, we felt it very important to reach out to the neighborhood that's immediately adjacent to the proposed project. So that's the Montebella neighborhood. We held three community meetings in the summer of 2023, again, before we even had an application into the county, so that we could talk with the community, hear what they had to say and then importantly, incorporate any feedback that they had for us. So we had great success at those meetings. Like I said, we had three of them and we had over 50 unique attendees. One person attended all three sessions and five people attended two. And we noticed those meetings within 1,000 feet of the project boundary and felt it was important to capture a good chunk of that Montebella neighborhood. We were also joined by two Salinas City Council people at one of those meetings, which was great, including the city council person, Tony Barrera, for that specific neighborhood. We provided real-time Spanish to English translation and also distributed information on how folks could sign up with the county to receive notices for hearings like this one. Next slide. For the first time with this project, we launched a project-specific website, which gave people a different way to interact if they couldn't attend either this meeting or a community meeting that we held in the summer. To date, we've had about 330 unique visits to that website and it's available in English and Spanish and allows viewers to see basic project info, read Q and A that came out of our community meetings and then submit us feedback directly if they'd like to. And there's a QR code on your screen if you'd like to view the website. That should be live for you to view. So coming out of our community engagement, we heard live for you to view. So coming out of our community engagement, we heard a very resounding feedback that circulation was a problem, specifically on Skonberg Avenue. We had originally conceptualized this project with one entrance and exit point off of Skonberg, and heard from the neighborhood that that was very problematic to them. There's a, I guess, a traffic backup in the mornings pertaining specifically to the school drop-off and pickup that happens between like 7:50 and 8:05 in the morning. So they really wanted to see a second access point. And you'll see that second new additional access point reflected on our plans before you today. And as Fiona mentioned earlier, there are some bus turning templates to show how those buses will turn in and out of the project, specifically on Alisal, that entrance the neighborhood asked for. There's a median turn lane, so that should give really clean access to the buses to make safe turns in and out. Next slide. And then again, off of Skonberg, we have set back the sidewalks a little bit to allow those buses to turn within their lane and not encroach into oncoming traffic when they're turning out of the site. So with that, I would like to thank you all for your time. I'd like to thank staff, in particular Fiona for her time, as well as the community for the time they gave us this summer to work together to put before you a solid project here today. So thank you very much. We're available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there questions on the commission for the Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I was just curious about the Skonberg Lane access point, and is that planned to be used on a regular basis? Is it just kind of an emergency ingress egress? What is going to be the main one that's used by the residents of this complex?
Sure. So we deliberately didn't intend either one to be main. They're both equal. And that reason is to give folks the opportunity to assess the current traffic condition, and then pick logically as to what's going on around them. So for instance, if there's a big backup on Skonberg in the morning during a school drop-off, it wouldn't be logical for someone to exit that way, enter the roundabout that's clogged up, to go south on Alisal. They would just exit directly onto Alisal instead. So neither is main. They're both equal.
Are there commissioners? Commissioner Roberts?
I just have one question, and I probably should have asked it of staff, but maybe you have it. Do you have a broader picture of this area? I'm just wondering which school you're referring to. Is it Elsal?
No, it's Barden Elementary School. And maybe Fiona can pull that up.
And then I was curious to know, I can't really tell where it is, how close it is to a grocery store or something. I know just from personal experience, watching people on the Davis Road, they'll walk to Walmart. And so I'm curious to know how.
So if you walk straight up north on Alisal, there's a grocery shopping center on that corner. So I'm going to say it's less than a mile away.
The old Monty Mart, whatever is.
I'm not sure what it's called. I'm sorry. Do you know what it's called, Barden?
That's okay. You don't, you'd have to come forward and be on the microphone, talk, because we have to record.
The shopping facilities on the corner of Barden and Williams Road.
Barden Williams. Okay, thank you.
There's a shopping, and they have a supermarket, and all kinds of stuff.
Is it the old Monty Mart? Am I?
No, no, it's a new, it's a mountain valley.
Okay. I can't picture this actual corner of this.
Thank you. And I guess that would just go to staff. Let's make sure we put really good vicinity maps available for all these projects, because it is super helpful for, although some of us just pull up the internet, but it's still good to have those on the paper. Thanks. Further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'm going to move along to public comment. Is there anyone here present who would like to speak on this matter? I believe we had one speaker slip. I would remind people, speaker slips are appreciated but not required. So this slip is for Yolanda Haynes. Would you like to come forward and speak your piece?
I'm Yolanda Hayes. I'm a longtime resident of Salinas. I grew up in that area on Alisal and Williams by the Cesar Chavez Library. That's where the shopping center is that they're talking about. And I've been here, well, all my life. I went to Alisal Elementary, Alisal High School, and Alisal High School. And I saw no future for me in Salinas, so I moved to the Bay Area to get an education, and I did very well. I also found a husband while I was in the Bay Area. So that was even a bonus on top of my journey to the Bay Area. I'm really concerned about Salinas. When I left Salinas back in 1979, I lived right across the street from a strawberry field. And we used to go and pick strawberries. We saved our money, and we just used to run across the street, and the people would let us pick strawberries. And, you know, that's how we got our money, which was good exercise for us as well. But it's really changed since I left. And that was, like I said, back in 1979. It was much better then than it is today. I hear all the hoopla about how Salinas is improving, and how we're doing so great in Monterey County. But I, I see it with my own eyes, and it's not happening. I feel sorry for the shopping center, because I live in Creek Bridge, and we see people, I don't know if they're farmworkers, unhoused, I don't know who they are, but just yesterday, there was a person with a stack of meats that high, stealing. Nobody does anything. So you watch. They're, they're, they're talking about water usage and things that they're going to need, but no services. It took me three months to make an appointment with my doctor. So we bring all these people in to farm the land, and there's no services for the residents. I mean, it's everywhere's packed. We're not growing at the pace that the farmers are planting. And strawberries, strawberries are an intensive crop. You have to pick each one by hand. There's no automation for strawberries. It's a luxury produce. It's not like when I was growing up, and it was called the salad bowl of the world. It was then the salad bowl of the world. Broccoli, celery, cauliflower. Now it's just strawberries everywhere, and there's no stop to it. Nobody stops them. And all these people that are coming to Monterey County, I, I just can't believe it. I'm not going to leave, though. I'm going to stay here, and I'm going to continue to voice my opinion. Now, the scarcity that we have, who created the scarcity? The farmers. Who's paying for the scarcity? The residents. We have a lot of slummy areas in Salinas. You need to take a drive through the areas where the farmworkers live, and it's a slum, total slum.
Ask you to sum up.
Okay. Well, in summary, I just wish there was, either Monterey County and Salinas get together and put a plan. If there's something you can do to stop strawberry growers, that would be really appreciated, because you can't just be bringing in people without the resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking your piece. I have no other speaker slips. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Welcome.
Thank you Chair Deal and Commissioners, Staff, and First Norm Group for Farm Bureau Monterey. I want to thank staff for their excellent presentation this morning on this project. And as Catherine alluded to, Farm Bureau is in support of this farmworker housing project. I think we have a great opportunity in front of us again today, and it's, again, an agricultural employer who is bringing to us a housing project to help with workforce housing. That is something that no one else is accomplishing in this county right now. And we need to respect that employers are trying to do the best for their employees. And these are employees that are already living in our community in substandard housing. And this gets them into a safe, clean environment. So we need to support these projects as we go along, to make sure that everything for farmworkers is intended as we all speak on a daily basis. I think it's important to note, too, that this project qualifies and meets all the requirements, either legal or housing or standards, and especially the buffers, which all prior projects have had to meet, including Spreckles Crossing, Baronda, and all the others. This is a mandatory requirement. And so we are doing the best for our farmworkers by providing this housing and making sure that they have a safe and clean place to live. So we urge your support for this project and move it forward so that we can indeed house additional farmworkers in a good environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Are there other people here present who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, are there any available, anybody wants to speak on Zoom?
Through the chair, yes, there's two hands, three hands currently raised. The first one is iPhone 10, Jose Guerra.
Mr. Guerra, please have the floor.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. I am a resident here in Montebella, and I oppose this project for the reason of the traffic. Not only that, they have not taken into account of the actual services for these people that are going to be living here. Our community get better and help other people get housing, but why don't we have other projects for people that exist here already? These are H2A residents, or I'm sorry, going to be residents here soon, that don't live here. We have people here that need housing. Not only that, but the Skornberg entrance needs to be stopped. We had these meetings with Mr. Ben Guard, Mrs. and Avila Construction. I went to all the meetings, and I protested this for the reason that it is causing too much traffic. Not only that, but Mr. Ben Guard also has an entrance on Freedom where his tractors, trailers, and pickup trucks just bring nothing but dirt to the, to the actual park that we have there. So I am very upset about this project. If they are willing to make the main entrance, and only the main entrance through Alisal Road, I will approve it. That's the only way. I don't want them in our neighborhood, because they're going to cause nothing but traffic. We have enough traffic as it is. When they tried to close Skornberg last year, to keep it closed, we had that issue. We had the issue of that happening, where the traffic was immensely horrible. You couldn't even cross the street. We had two kids that actually got hit over here on Montebella Boulevard, crossing the street, within two years, crossing the street. So I oppose this project. If they're going to make the entrance on Skornberg, if they want to do it on Alisal Road, I will give my blessing. But thank you, all you guys, for your time and efforts on making the community better. But let's not build only housing for the H2A workers. Let's build it for all the other agriculture workers that work for him. And I let him know that. I even talked to Avila Construction about it, and they didn't give me an answer. They said, oh, we're thinking about it. Let's not think about it. Let's do it. If you're going to spend that much money, let's take care of everybody. Let's take care of the existing farmworkers that are 10 to 12, at some occasions to an apartment, because they can't afford housing. That is it for me. Thank you very much. Montebella resident since 2005. I appreciate all your time, gentlemen. Have a great day.
Thank you. I see a hand from Laura Davis. Can we, can we bring her up, please?
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Laura Davis. I'm the Deputy Director of Land Watch Monterey County, and I will be providing comments on Land Watch's behalf. Land Watch is pleased to support the Gabalán Agricultural Employee Housing Project as it addresses a critical community need for clean, safe, convenient, and affordable housing for agricultural workers. California has an unfortunate history and practice of recognizing the economic utility of migrant farmworkers, but it falls short when it comes to recognizing their humanity and dignity. If our economy and lifestyle depend on the work of seasonal farmworkers, we should provide safe and quality housing for them. The Gabalán project represents an opportunity to fulfill this obligation. For this reason, Land Watch encourages the Planning Commission to approve the project. In addition to meeting an important human need, the project is consistent with the smart planning principles that Land Watch advocates for. Its proximity to the city of Salinas allows access to public services within walking and biking distances, and it facilitates the use of public transportation. The new apartments will be safer and cleaner, and more water and energy efficient than overcrowded homes and other places where workers currently live. It's designed and built by the same teams that designed and built the Tanamira and Antle and Casa Baronda projects, which have been highly successful in providing quality housing and blending in with the larger community. Land Watch also commends Ben Guard Ranch for being responsive to issues identified by the community during the review, including incorporating solar and other energy solutions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, providing extra bike racks, and adding a second project access point. Land Watch is proud to join other housing advocates, the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, and agricultural community in supporting the project. Because of the pressing need for workforce housing solutions, we recognize the important benefits this project offers to agricultural workers, our agricultural economy, and the broader community. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Huerta, your hand is raised. You have the floor.
Good morning Commissioners. Matt Huerta, Senior Advisor for the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. We did fully endorse this high-quality development, another farmworker housing project that I believe that we can all be proud of. We've tracked this very closely and worked very closely with the developers, as much as we could, and including attending the, their community engagement process, which we commend. And especially, we're very impressed with the Ben Guard family and Avila Construction coming forward and thoughtfully integrating the improvements that many neighbors and local residents were requesting. So it's definitely come a long way from what we first saw. And, you know, we need a need, there's a need for over 30,000 units to relieve chronic overcrowding based on the 2018 farmworker housing study. So obviously, this is still a drop in the bucket, but certainly a significant move in the right direction. And we, we commend the whole team for moving this along, and the county's support and recommendation. I also want to mention that I support this project personally. As a longtime resident myself, I've been in the Montebella neighborhood for 17 years. And I firmly believe that not only here, but across our region, we really need to see more mixed income, high-quality, higher-density housing, really in every neighborhood. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. I don't see any additional hands up. Are there any emails received?
Through the chair, there's no emails received.
Very well, then. I'd like to invite the applicant to respond, if they care to do so, to any of the comments we have heard. I don't see a rush to the front. Okay, we're going to move right back to staff. Staff, would you like to respond to any comments received during the public testimony?
Not specifically any comments, but I do have an aerial image if Commissioner Roberts would like to see that.
Please.
Alex, can you please share the HDMI?
The existing agricultural employee housing, both apartments and single-family dwellings, is in this portion, this corner of the property. The proposed site is just east of that. And this is the Barden Elementary School, and the roundabout, as the applicant had mentioned.
Montebella subdivision is just east in this, this portion of the city of Salinas.
Commissioner Roberts?
And then just to follow up, I sincerely appreciate that. I think, yes, where that super taqueria is marked, is that where the shopping area that was referred to is, I was imagining down Alisal.
Yes, I believe it is mentioned at the corner of Alisal and Williams.
Commissioner Roberts, are you good? Very well. Commissioner Shaw, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. Could you just do a, is it possible to do a street view right there on Skornberg, right by the school, Barden Elementary? I just wanted to see what that exit looks like from the school.
My computer refuses to connect to Wi-Fi. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Thank you, staff. Are there any comments, statements, or motions? Commissioner Gomez?
I just wanted to state that I'm really impressed with the effort that the farmer and outlet construction did in terms of community outreach, and also getting different community organizations such as Land Watch, the Farm Bureau, Monterey Bay Economic Partnerships, to support this idea. I think that the people realize, what? I think that the people realize what a tremendous need there is, both for, for, you know, the shortage of labor for farmworkers, and also for providing quality housing for farmworkers that live and work in our valley. So I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve the proposed development.
There's a motion from Commissioner Gomez. Is there a second? Commissioner Daniels would like to second that motion, and we can continue the discussion. Commissioner Shaw, I think you had your hand up earlier.
Oh yeah, thank you. I was just, I had two questions. I was curious, one, if the applicant would be opposed to having that Skornberg entrance closed generally, and only having it open if it's an emergency, just kind of making that a non-issue for the neighborhood? Because I can see, looking at that map, how that could be a big problem for the elementary school traffic. And if, what would really be the reason to go that other way? It seems like it would be fine with just the community using that, that developments community, using that one exit and entrance. And also, I'm looking at this additional stuff that was given, and it has the traffic route for the construction debris, and it shows that being all routed through Skornberg. And if that's already highly impacted, I can speak from experience, the amount of construction traffic far exceeds anything I could have ever fathomed. And if that is already a highly impacted road, this will be devastating for traffic. And is there a way to reroute that a different way so it's not impacting that community?
I'd like to ask the staff to address that insofar as they can before we open up the public comment again. Staff, have you got any input on those questions?
Through the chair, yes. This is just a draft construction management plan, and Monterey County Engineering Services would need to approve the final construction management plan, which will be incorporated into the final building set. And I can work with both the applicant and engineering services to determine whether or not ingress and egress off of the Alisal driveway would be appropriate for construction materials.
I might just add to that to say that if you can add an outcome to that condition, saying that we're attempting to avoid congestion that's been identified in this situation, then we have guidance for those who are reviewing and creating those management plans. I would certainly strongly suggest that. Any comments on whether that, that entrance or egress is something that staff would support being closed part of the time? Or, I guess, I'm not quite sure, but...
Through the chair, yes. We can update condition number 13 to address alleviating traffic, existing traffic concerns along Skornberg.
I think that would, that might not be a bad idea. And with respect to opening and closing, any thoughts you have about that?
Specific to the construction management plan, or in general?
Previous to that, I think Commissioner Shaw asked if there were a consideration that that entrance be closed upon occasion. I'm assuming high-traffic times.
I have not discussed that with the applicant.
Very well. Commissioner Gomez, did you?
No, I just wanted to say I-
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, I, that, that, the, in terms of the, I mean, there might, I'm sure there's going to be an impact there, right, on traffic? But that's not, I think that in terms of who spoke to it, I think only one person spoke to that issue in terms of the overall hearing that we had here today. And in terms of the other access point, I think it needs to be created, right, through Alisal. It doesn't exist now.
Through the chair, the access through Alisal does exist to serve the existing agricultural employee housings, but they would extend that access driveway to the subject property. I would also like to add the, the majority of the traffic trips associated with this, potentially off of Skornberg Parkway, would be in the peak hours of 4:00 to 5:00 a.m., which wouldn't conflict with the, the elementary school's traffic trips.
Thank you, staff. Commissioner Roberts?
On this same subject, first I want to say, even if we only had one member of the public speak to this issue, it is quite possible that only one member of the public was able to participate in this meeting due to a variety of reasons. So I would hate to discount this one voice, just because we only heard one voice. That said, my question was also related to this topic. And I just was curious to know if staff can tell us what, when this, obviously, this member of the public has raised this concern. And so are you aware of how this was addressed? I know they added a second access. But is that, is that what they did, is added two accesses, but not necessarily defined how those accesses would be used?
It was my understanding that the Alisal driveway would be the primary ingress and egress, and the driveway off of Skornberg would be secondary.
Okay, so then I guess in addition to everything the other commissioners have mentioned about egress and for construction management, it would be important to me that Alisal be named the primary with some sort of outcome as well?
And through the chair, I believe that's reflected in the draft resolution as Alisal driveway being the primary.
Thank you. I vaguely recall the applicant saying something contrary to that. So I just want to clarify. May I invite the applicant up anyway? Because we've had a change to the conditions with respect to the construction management. And if we could clarify that point, make sure we're all on the same, we all understand the same things, that would be probably a good idea. And while you're there, you can say if you're, clarify that you're okay or not with all of the conditions.
Good morning, I'm Jeff Norwood, Avila Construction. I think the current construction management plan was the preliminary one that we submitted as part of the planning application. Since then, and after community outreach, I can confirm, we do plan to use the Alisal entrance as the primary entrance and exit from the project, both during construction, as well as when we have final occupancy. Part of having the two entrances off of Skornberg and Alisal, it actually allows us to limit traffic flow going through the roundabout, especially during school, peak drop-off at pickup times. They can go out Skornberg and head in the opposite direction, not have to go through the roundabout. Or they could alternatively just come out the Alisal exit and go down Alisal, heading down south. So it was a huge benefit after we had the community meetings of why we made both entrances. And I want to propose to keep both of those entrances.
Thank you. And the other conditions that are included in the application are all acceptable to the applicant?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other commissioners care to comment? Commissioner Daniels?
We had a photo, the applicants could just stay. There was a photo, a slide that was put up that showed all of the other projects in the area. I can't remember the total number of, of projects, but is there any, is there anything you might be able to add about concerns that the public had about traffic for other H2A projects that either panned out or did not pan out? Is there, is there any experiential you can add to some of the things we've heard about concerns of traffic for these projects?
Sure. So I would say, having gone through a number of these projects, the concerns from the community are generally the same, project to project. We hear a lot about traffic. We hear quite a bit about parking and any potential overflow of cars into the public right-of-way, parking in the public right-of-way. And then we also hear some general concerns about safety, especially related to an all-male resident population. But as far as we can tell, none of those fears have ever come to fruition. I think TNA was really the testing grounds for that. Folks came out in arms against that project, and there's been no negative impacts on the community, so far as we can tell. We have some anecdotal evidence that has come into our office about people very concerned about projects. And then, once they're occupied, they don't really realize they're occupied. Harvest Moon, in particular, is our biggest project just outside the city of Salinas and the county of Monterey. It's 150 living units. We got a call to our office from a woman one day, and she said, "I'm very concerned about this. When it's occupied, this is just going to be a mess. There's going to be people all over the place. What can we do about this?" And so we asked her, "Well, is everything okay right now?" And she said, "Yeah, everything's fine right now." And we said, "Well, it's been occupied for a few months. So if everything's okay now, then everything's probably okay," and that satisfied her. So anecdotally, we hear from folks that they have very low impact once occupied, and those fears around traffic and safety just don't come to fruition.
Thank you. I do have a couple of comments. Thank you all. I appreciate your coming back and, and helping us understand. Just a couple of general comments. First off, I think these projects have improved over the time they've been coming forward, both in substance and very much so in process. And I really appreciate this press to engage the community early and substantively in all of the places and ways they are. I find that extremely admirable and much, I much appreciate it. I wanted to respond to the members of the public who have a couple of comments that we received about wanting to provide additional housing for the resident population, which is still experiencing this population, this shortage of housing. And I agree utterly. Absolutely, we want to do that. The Planning Commission, unfortunately though, only reviews the projects that are brought before it. And in this case, this project is very much on something that I find exciting, among all of the ones that have come forward in this approach. It seems to me to be an illustration that the employers in our county are stepping up to their duty of care for the people that they invite to come, join us, to help them in their work. That's been a long time coming. Every little bit of that counts, and it's much appreciated. No, it's not the same as building housing for people who want to live here all the time, but it's definitely a good thing, and every little bit helps. And there's no silver bullet to a project of this mag, a problem of this magnitude. It's going to take every little bit, every other way we can do it. This appears to me to be a way to provide safe housing for people that are, have come here to work on the behalf of the employers of this county. And that is exceedingly admirable and much appreciated, and I wish we could do more of it. With respect to support services, yes. We hope that we provide support services for everyone who's here. Unfortunately, again, the Planning Commission can only approve applications that come before it. Hopefully, I've been lectured on the market, and the power of the market my entire life. Hopefully, there will be some economic opportunity generated at some point where people will find it appropriate to supply these services. And we look forward to that time. Again, with the changes made, I'm very pleased to be able to support a project of this kind and hope that we will see more of these, along with considering how we can provide similar opportunities for persons who live here all the time. I really think that this model is, is a very useful model, but employees come from here as well as from other places. And it seems to me that there is the possibility here of using this kind of an approach to provide additional housing for the additional resident population that's currently experiencing such a very, very difficult time. So with that, I appreciate it very much. If there are no more comments from the commission, we have, Commissioner Shaw, did you want to add a comment? Please.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a comment that I hear the public's concerns. I have been on the other side of this, you know, before. And so I'm very, I have a lot of empathy for those concerns. But I do think that this is a good location for this project. And I am trying personally to balance the needs of the community along with the needs of these farmers who have a right to do what they want with their property, within reason, and that this fulfills a need for them specifically. And also echo, again, that we're not getting those projects that fulfill housing needs for people who are already here. And so that is something that needs to be addressed on a different level, finding developers and landowners who are willing to bring forth those kind of projects and that are affordable for the public, people who already live here. And I hope that that happens in the future. But that's not reason enough for me to not vote for this kind of project that is, you know, very appropriate for the location. And I like that there is that Alisal entrance, and that that will hopefully be considered as the main entrance, and that the impacts on that other road are very minimal in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you all. With, with that being said, I'd like to move forward to the vote on this matter. We have a motion before us by Commissioner Gomez for the staff's recommendation as amended, second by Commissioner Daniels. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And the motion passes. Thank you all. Commissioner Gonzalez may join us, if he's available, I believe. The secretary's going to go and get him. While we're setting up, we're going to move on to the item number six on our agenda today, which is PLN 200032. The Paul Flores and Linda, Paul and Linda S. Flores Trust. Staff can be getting ready. Commissioner Gonzalez has returned. So we're ready when you are.
Thank you. Alex, can you please share the presentation?
Oh, thank you. Good morning, Planning Commission and Chair Deal. I'm Zoe Zep, and today I'll be presenting staff's report on PLN 200032 Flores. The project is located at 25836 Paseo Real, within the Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan. The parcel has a zoning of low-density residential with a B6 and visual sensitivity overlay zoning districts, with a maximum structure height of 20 feet from the average natural grade. The proposed project includes the construction of a single-family dwelling, a second single-family dwelling with an attached barn, an accessory dwelling unit, a pool and a non-habitable pool cabana, the removal of 69 protected coastlive oak trees, and development on slopes in excess of 25%. The proposed site plan here shows the two proposed single-family dwellings, the accessory dwelling unit with the attached garage, and the pool and pool cabana. About one-third of the lot is a designated conservation and scenic easement to protect an existing oak woodland, steep slopes, and views from Highway 68. The majority of the lot is open space with a few trees on top of the ridge. The shaded pink area here represent the estimated areas containing slopes in excess of 25%. The lot is flat at the bottom, close to the road, but gradually becomes steeper as you travel up the hillside, and becomes very steep where three of the proposed structures are located. A previous permit to allow development of the same lot was applied for in 2005. PLN 050671 included the construction of a single-family dwelling, a new driveway, and the removal of five protected oak trees. This permit was denied by the Planning Commission, but was appealed and approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2007. A construction permit was applied for but never issued, thus the planning permit expired in 2009. However, the proposed driveway was created, and it shows up in historical Google Earth imagery as early as 2005. The driveway continues to exist today, but the county does not have record of granting a permit for its creation. Staff identified multiple inconsistencies throughout the course of review. The property currently has an active code violation for unpermitted tree removal. The proposed development does not appear to have been designed to minimize impacts to slopes in excess of 25%. The proposed removal of 69 protected coastlive oak trees does not appear to be the minimum necessary to develop the vacant lot. And the proposed development on top of the lot's ridgeline may result in visual impacts to Highway 68, which is inconsistent with multiple Monterey County regulations, goals, and policies. Additional inconsistencies include proposed development within the required front, within the required front setback without the request for a variance, and proposed development on top of the proposed leach fields. The second single-family dwelling is inconsistent with the allowed density of one unit per two and a half acres. The application was never deemed complete due to a lack of information required for staff's review, including the proposed site coverage, the proposed height of each- staff's review, including the proposed site coverage, the proposed height of each structure from the average natural grade, grading quantities, along with the proposed amount of development on slopes in excess of 25%. The applicant requested to move forward to a public hearing without submitting a complete application or addressing the inconsistencies with Monterey County regulations, goals, and policies. Additionally, the applicant requested to move forward to a public hearing without attending a land use advisory committee meeting. Therefore, the project did not have the benefit of being reviewed by a LUAC. Staff received multiple public comments on this project. Three of them were letters from neighbors in opposition of the proposed project. These letters listed concerns, including the amount of tree removal, development on slopes, and visual impacts. These neighbors are also concerned that the size of the project is not consistent with the existing neighborhood character. One letter received was in support of the project. The author stated the existing hillside is ugly and would benefit from the proposed development. Additionally, they believe the new development would increase their property value and add aesthetic value to the neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission find that denial of a project is statutorily exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15270 of the SEQA guidelines, and deny a combined development permit for the construction of the first single-family dwelling, the second single-family dwelling with an attached barn, a nonhabitable accessory pool house, an accessory dwelling unit with an attached garage, and associated site improvements within a visual sensitivity district, the removal of 69 protected coastlive oak trees, and development on slopes in excess of 25%. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to first ask a question of council, which is, given that I'm not aware that our process is optional, is this matter properly before the Planning Commission at this time?
It sounds like there's certain information that planning staff asked for, and the applicant refused to provide. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Was the application deemed complete?
It was not deemed complete because I was not able to complete my review. I was given, or I was told by our director that we could move forward at the applicant's request for a public hearing.
I think we'll give the applicant, I think it's proper to go forward with today, and we can get to the bottom of why the additional information wasn't provided to make, to allow staff to determine whether it would be consistent with our code and our policy requirements. And then we can kind of go from there as far as where this goes.
My question to council has to do with, the recommendation of staff is for denial. Should this project be denied at this point? Does that automatically mean that the application was complete? And we don't normally make a finding on whether or not an application is complete at the Planning Commission. And I'm not aware of ever having been asked to do that, and I'm not clear on how the code would allow us to do that.
I'd want to think on that a little bit more. I don't know if staff has a response, given that you did think through it and decided to bring this to hearing, even though you didn't deem it complete.
My response is, I did, I don't know if Anna wants to go for this one, but I was given permission by management to move forward. We had asked multiple times and sent out multiple incomplete letters to the applicant, and they weren't interested in providing certain information for us, and they just said that they wanted to move forward to a public hearing as soon as possible. And I was told that we could go that route.
I'm still with staff for just a second, understanding, because before we get into any merits, I want to understand whether we should be doing this. My current inclination is that it would be a precedent to say that we would take up applications at the request of a member of the public that have not been deemed complete, because I think the code requires what the code requires. So that's why, I know, I understand that my fellow commissioners have questions, but I don't want to go there until we get to the reasoning behind why we would do this, to my experience, a unique thing.
If I may, through the chair, Director Craig Spencer is on Zoom, and I believe would like to comment on this point.
Please.
Yes, thank you. I apologize I'm not there in person, but I think in this case, we have an applicant who is proposing to build a number of structures. We have requested some information, but I think in the same, in the same review of the information that's been provided to us, we've raised a number of concerns about what we can tell are inconsistencies in the site plan that was provided. Rather than having the applicant provide additional information with that expenditure, which they're not willing to do, we have given them the option to move forward with a recommendation for denial, given that we do have the information that we believe we need to find it inconsistent with the site plan and the proposal that we have in front of us. We would not be able to make findings to support the application absent additional information that has been requested, like the elevations and some other technical reports and information. But I don't think that the applicant desires to provide that and would like some sort of decision on the application that they have provided to us. So we've given them that opportunity in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Anna Kinga with HCD Planning, if I could also add to that. Pursuant to Government Code Section 65956C, failure of an applicant to submit complete or adequate information may constitute grounds for disapproving a development project. So we looked at both that Government Code section, as well as the information we did have on hand, showing that the proposal was inconsistent. And that's how staff arrived at our recommendation of denial.
Thank you. So assuming that, following through on that course, should we, at this hearing, make a determination about this project based on what has been described as inadequate information compared to our usual requirements, does that project then become, what project would be appealable? I mean, we don't know what the project is, so how, where does it fit into our process?
I obviously didn't think this through completely before this hearing, and I'd like a minute to look at it, if that'd be okay with the commission, and speak with staff.
Let's take 10 minutes and ask, and have you caucus with council and come back with some other thoughts about this. We'll recess for 10 minutes.
If we could reconvene, apparently the experts have come up with a recommendation, and we're at a point where we could proceed if we chose to sit in our chairs and do so. Not looking at anybody in particular. Thank you all. I'd like to bring the Planning Commission meeting back into session and ask staff what has been the outcome of your conversations.
Yes, thank you, Chair Deal, members of the Planning Commission, Anna Kinga. Staff has conferred with county council, and at this point, we would request a continuance to a date uncertain in order to allow us to ensure that we are following the correct procedures by law. In addition, there is a section of our Code 2177 that allows for processing of inactive applications, and we want to determine whether that is more appropriate in this case due to the project's incomplete status.
Thank you. It is an agendized item, but I will refer to council about what we would accept public comment on, given the status of this item.
I think at this point, we will accept public comment on staff's request for continuance, if that's okay with the commission, and will return, potentially depending on staff's research, further on this issue.
Seeing no objection, I'm going to open the public comment on the matter of the recommended continuance to a date uncertain and not on the merits of the project. Anybody like to come forward and speak on that matter is hereby invited to do so. You will have three minutes.
Welcome, Madam Chair. I'm a neighbor, and I live directly across, and I just ask that we be specifically given notice of this meeting. I've been here for three hours this morning, waiting for this meeting, and I'm really affected by it, but I would, I will come back and make the comments that I will make. I'm not adverse to the gentleman building a house there. It's just the spectacular size of what he's doing there. And they're a nice family, but I think, for some reason, they're misguided in what they're doing in the process. It just boggles my mind how they're doing this. But this is America, and everybody has a right to do what they want to do. But I would like to, people that came here were affected, should be specifically mailed that we know this has a serious effect on our values. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And I would point out that if we continue an item to a date uncertain, there will be complete notice again. It will be re-noticed before it comes back to hearing. So you would receive certainly the same notice you did before. Plus, if you were to contact the staff and ask to be put on the list as a person of interest, that would further ensure that you would be notified of any developments that were public information with relating to this project. So both of those would probably be ways to address that concern. I think the first happens whether you want to or not. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak about the matter of this continuance?
Good morning, everybody. Yeah, I'm here with my wife, Leslie, and we are also a neighbor at 25872, just below him, where the steep grade is, and we have a lot of concerns, which I won't address. But I, personally, listening to this whole thing, I think that you saw the plans, you saw what he's proposing to do, your staff has recommended against it. I would ask you to just deny it as is, and then if he wants to come back- I would ask you to just deny it as is, and then if he wants to come back in the future with some other proposal, with a complete proposal, you know, maybe then consider it. But as of now, I think what he's planned to do is way out of proportion to anything in the community, and to me, makes no sense whatsoever.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the continuance? Do we have any hands up on the Zoom?
Yes, through the chair, we have one hand up. Chad's phone.
Chad's phone, please feel free to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Chad Brown. I'm designer and agent for Mr. and Mrs. Flores. I want to say thank you for the continuance in that time. I think it would be a good idea if we continued and filled out the application in full, and if there is any feedback from the community, that would be good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nobody else on Zoom? Any emails?
There's no emails received.
Thank you. That being the case, I'd like to bring it back to the commission. Colleagues, Commissioner Roberts.
Can I just put out a public service announcement, sort of not related to this project, but related? The Greater Monterey Peninsula LUAC is currently in need of members, and I've been reaching out to people in that area. So anybody listening online or members here, the LUAC Committee is a local land use advisory committee that provides, typically provides feedback on projects in their area before it reaches us, and is information that is incredibly valuable to the Planning Commission. And right now, that LUAC that represents this area where this project is doesn't have enough members to meet a quorum. So if you are interested, or have a neighbor that might be interested, or know of somebody who might be interested, we would love to have your support in that LUAC area. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Is there a motion?
It's a moot.
Commissioner Gomez, I assume you are moving this item to, continue this item to a date uncertain. Commissioner Getzelman, are you seconding?
No.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of this continuance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And that motion carries, and the matter is continued to a date uncertain. We have one more item on our agenda, which is the all-important nominating committee. And since Commissioner Monsalve is not here, I get the honor of appointing that committee, which I am going to propose is made up, is chaired by Commissioner Mendoza, and consists of Commissioner Work and Commissioner Gomez. And the information about the history of people on chairs is available from the clerk. I have a copy here, although I've written all over it, and I believe the recommendation is due back the first meeting in February for a vote. So are you all amenable to serving in that capacity? Excellent. Thank you very much. Now we have a department report.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a very expensive department report at this time. I did want to, one, just provide an update that we have, since you're a Planning Commission, did want to update that we have been successful in our recruitment and have announced the start of the successful promotional opportunity for two of our in-house employees, who will be transitioning, promoting onto our planning team as assistant planner and PT3. So we'll have for sure two new staff members starting shortly and still pending on others. We returned from the ECO recess, which just as staff to, sort of just on the public, really appreciate and thank both to the clients who come and utilize our services, as well as just to our staff. That break is really appreciated on all, and I think we all come back refreshed and able to kind of retackle projects. So just want to say that was successful, and on behalf of staff, we're happy to be back and refreshed a bit. With that, no other updates.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I don't have any other further agendized business, so seeing nothing, I would like to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at whatever time it is, which is 12 oh something?
12 oh six.
12 oh six, apparently. Thank you all.